Welcome, everybody, this evening. We'll start out with the public commentary. And Susan, I think that's you.
I think I can talk loud enough, if that's okay. I'm so excited to introduce you to Zoe Vaughn, and this is her fiance, John. We've had several very, very part-time people at the Chamber office, and she has deemed it necessary to stay there long-term. Fabulous. She'll be doing the marketing, the advertising, everything I can do, and you guys will love her. If it's okay, I'd like her to tell you a few things about herself.
Sure. Zoe, would you come up to the mic? Because the people, I'm not sure that they can hear.
Not to be rude to them. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm Zoe Vaughn, and I have, with my fiance, a marketing and graphic design business outside of the work that I do with the Chamber. And I'm excited to be a part of merging the efforts, well, hopefully complementing and maybe eventually merging the efforts of the city and the Chamber towards common goals for marketing the town and the businesses. And I look forward to picking your brains and talking to you and seeing what we can do to make tourism and travel in Council Grove more sunny, better. Nice meeting you all.
Thank you, Zoe.
You've already done a good job.
Thank you.
Welcome to Council Grove. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll have the consent agenda. That includes the minutes of the previous meeting, appropriations, and we don't have any late cabin transfers. So can I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Who was that? Susan. Moved to second end to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion carries 6-0. Okay. Old business, our north Riverwalk extension update. Nick.
It's done. They have the lights done. It's only been a two-year project. This should have took me a year. But it is done. They got the lights rewired and everything. All the LED lights are in. The pole's been replaced. They've got a couple of those recycled benches and tables that you guys bought, and there's a couple of spots where we're going to put a couple of benches down there. But yeah, heard a lot of good things about it. People are really enjoying it.
Yeah. I know Pride is also getting ready to order some waste baskets and a few planters and stuff, too. So as time goes on, we'll work with the city to see what.
Right. I think Mark and the tree committee, Memorial Tree Committee is going to need, we have somebody that wants to purchase five or six trees for that north Riverwalk extension.
Good. That's awesome. Great. Thank you. Okay. New business, we have GMDC Tracy Henry.
I'm a loud talker, too, but I'll step close to where you want me to be. Appreciate you guys' time. I see that Jason Dentson has assigned seats, so it kind of threw me off, but it's okay.
I didn't do that, so.
I just wanted to give you guys an update on what the GMDC is doing right now with housing. You guys have talked about it multiple times, multiple committees around the county, and the city have talked about it multiple times, but we couldn't really get the wheels on the bus kind of going forward. The GMDC has committed to a housing study that will begin after January 1. So I reached out to a couple of different entities. Developmental Strategies Incorporated was one. They're the ones that are just now kicking off the Manhattan Housing Study. They are based out of Omaha, Nebraska, and they have a satellite office, I believe, in Wichita area. That just didn't fit well with what we're looking at doing. We want to do an entire comprehensive housing study for entire Morse County. So we've committed to doing that because there's never been one done, unless there's somebody here that can tell me I'm wrong. There's never been one done. Obviously, our focus is going to be Council Grove and the City Lake area because that's obviously where our population is. The organization that we decided to go with, and I say "we," I mean me, and my board has agreed to that, that's RDG Design and Planning. They, too, are based out of Omaha, Nebraska, and I don't know if any of you have dealt with those types of organizations or entities, but that's who just is wrapping up the entire Kansas housing initiative that has been done in the last year or so. There's been meetings. I'm sure some of you have probably popped in on some of those. Amy Hazy is the principal of that organization. They, too, are based out of Omaha, but she has done extensive work across the state of Kansas. And that being said, now is the prime time. I mean, we are right at literally coming off brand-new, fresh census data. She's also worked with Dickinson County and Line County and done their housing studies just in the last recent little bit, which means for her to take a deeper dive into Morse County, we can do that a very cost-effective way to do it. The housing study would be about a 90-day, so we would start that after the first of the year and have a report going forward mid to late March, again, depending on exactly what date she's able to start with us. They're extremely busy, and I get that. But in talking with her, she says, you know, it shouldn't be as difficult because of the fresh data and the statewide assessments. So, and if the state of Kansas puts money into that, that gives me a little bit of confidence for the fact that, and we've talked about it from the GMDC board, the Council Grove EDC board, is we can't find any other funding to get any initiative up and going without having a housing study. It has to be done. That is step one, period. That being said, the GMDC says, we've got to do it because that allows you, as a governing body, to open up other initiatives that are available through the state, be it finding infrastructure funding through CDBG, through USDA, through other commerce programs, the new one, the RHID, which is the Rural Housing Initiative District. But you guys can't do that as a governing body to focus on Council Grove until we get a study done for you. So I guess I'm here to, for one, ask for your support in that because it'll be comprehensive, and it'll be my boots on the ground. I'm not asking any of you to donate or volunteer any more of your time because you all do enough of that in the community in multiple facets. But the Council Grove EDC kind of subcommittee, after our last meeting, we formed some subcommittees, and housing being one, an RHID committee, again, knowing that what we're doing next is what's going to propel those things forward. Nick is involved in that, and we met yesterday as well as Zoe. If you guys want to tell me if there's something I'm missing.
No, I think you got it.
So far, you're hitting it right on the head.
Okay. So obviously, the main focus is going to be Council Grove and the City Lake, regardless of what happens with annexation and things of that nature. That's still a population base that we really have to continue to focus on. And then obviously, I'll be going to the County Commission, and as I told Nick today, they're obviously busy because we can't get to see them until the 16th of November, I believe, is the date. But we need to be an all-in, and I think instead of having different entities going in different directions, let's focus on a standing point for everybody, and then each individual entity can take that study and move that forward in whatever way suits the communities the best. The comprehensive plan will include Dwight White City, rural areas, Willsey of the county, but that's not going to be, it's going to be more of a lumped-in for those entities and those communities just because of the smaller population. It just makes physical sense to put the focus here. So thoughts, concerns?
I might say that the Economic Development Group, and several of you were at that last meeting and at the meetings before, and we've all talked about that the housing study is definitely in need and that the next step, and so the Economic Development Group recommends doing a housing study, but we also said that we wanted to work together with GMDC so that we could, there's no reason for us to be doing two different directions. We all need to work together. In fact, all of us do, city, county, and all the small towns, just like you said. And there's a fee to this?
There is. And so in visiting with Amy, and again, the fruit is ripe for the picking at this point because these housing studies can get up to $25,000 and $30,000. Obviously, they are going to be that way in larger communities, Manhattan, even Emporia area, and they pay pretty significant dollars because they had to get some stale data and get it refreshed. I think we can come in at around $10,000 because the data's there already, which is fantastic news. We were not expecting anything of that nature, to get a comprehensive study from an organization that's that well-recognized, and not just in the state of Kansas, but primarily in the state of Kansas. Obviously, I wasn't looking at other states when I was looking at who has done a lot of work. I'm a member of the Kansas Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors, and multiple members of that board, on the KETA board, have worked with this individual and this company, and there's nothing bad that's been said. So I think.
If we're talking about cost-sharing, is that kind of what we'd like to do?
And I'm going to leave that to the council or the recommendations. Obviously, it's got to get done, period. It's just got to get done.
One of the things we talked about yesterday is, once the plan is complete, there's obviously going to need to be funding to initiate the plan since the need is housing. And I think what GMDC and them is going to need is the city to kick in money when that point gets here because from what I understand, you guys are going to take care of the study, correct? And our concern is after that study is done.
What can we do to go to move it forward? Because having a study and putting it on a shelf does nobody any good. I think everybody realizes that. It's great to do these feasibility studies and whatever, and then you set them aside, and nobody looks at them, and they're not utilized. So obviously, implementation is going to be key after the fact. The study itself is going to get us our good information and really good information that we can then go, because we've all talked about it, and we've talked about it. I mean, I can meet Jason at shortstop, and he'll say, "We need houses." I say, "I know," and he'll say, "We need this kind of house," and somebody else will say, "I need this kind of house." We don't know that. So what we've got to find out is what we, we've got to learn to know what we don't know. So in doing so, then obviously, we've got to have an implementation plan going forward to make sure that we're not only doing it, but that we're doing something with it.
Right. As part of the county, I told Tracy I'd go up to and talk to the county commissioners with her to help her with that. So that's the plan on November 16.
Correct. And the county's aware that we have housing issues. I mean, everybody in it's aware, and it's not just Morse County or Council Grove, it's nationwide. So I do see some funding coming down federally for some housing initiatives, but again, we couldn't even continue to even look into those without having this done, so.
Pretty good timing with the state just getting done with theirs.
Yes. And again, using that same organization, they're the ones that got that data, so we know that data's fresh, and we know it's current, and we're not going to have to pay for another entity to go out and get the exact same data.
So your real ask for us is, are you just letting us know what's going on, or are you having to ask at this time?
I think I'm going to throw that back to you guys. If you're willing to make an investment in that, or if you're willing to consider future investments to get something going as far as the developmental side. Again, it's going to be very Council Grove-heavy for obvious reasons, but.
And the plan is also to ask the smaller communities that are going to be involved in also to kick in something. Obviously, they don't have the population that Council Grove has, but.
I think it would be good for us, this is my opinion, and you all can pitch in here, but I think it would be good for us to pitch in a little something so we all have ownership. This is an important, you know, probably one of the most important studies we've done considering we do have a housing problem, and we just aren't sure what it is.
Right. Well, and the other thing for that going forward is it goes beyond housing because we've got to look at workforce. We have workforce issues, and we can't attract a workforce if we don't have a place for them to live. That's a problem. That's a problem that the school districts have. I intend to go talk with the school districts as well because they're struggling to get qualified teachers that have a place to live on an affordable housing budget. So, and I've been married to a teacher for 30, well, I'm only 29, so it can't be that long, but for a long time. And I can tell you that we're struggling finding housing in Morse County because it's just not here, you know? And he teaches in White City at USD 481. I know I've talked with Aaron Doty multiple times, 417 Tribals, too. It's a problem. And until we do something to keep moving the housing problem forward, we can't fix the workforce. We can't, you know, my job of doing recruitment and that, and it's like, I liken it to going bowling. I mean, it's great if you've got the pins all down there, but if you don't have a ball to throw at them, you know, you're just standing there looking stupid.
Sorry. Go ahead. Is the $10,000 firm number yet?
That is a pretty solid firm. I'm pretty sure I can do it for that, Tracy. But that is, again, her wrapping up the end of this year's stuff with the state, as well as, I think she's got maybe two or three counties out in western Kansas she's wrapping up. But knowing that she has that fresh data, knowing the population, I mean, she was pulling it up as we were negotiating this, she was fairly confident $10,000 was.
And how much do you have committed towards the study now?
I think that we can fund it 100% if need be. Obviously, anything that offsets that helps us put those dollars back into an implementation once we're done with it. So.
We talked yesterday on the call to you about maybe asking each of the towns to put in a per capita, like dividing it up that way so that the teeny-tiny towns might be putting in a nominal amount, but they're contributing, and they have buy-in as well. And Council Grove would have clearly the most significant buy-in, but it just, and that would be, so even if GMDC can put in the top 10 to propel it forward, that would kind of be an initial ask.
My thought is, then we all have ownership in it. It's our study, just like it will be their study, just like it'll be the county's study if we all have a little bit of.
Correct. So if, obviously, if the GMDC pays that full study, it's property of the GMDC. If each community wants to get involved in that, and the county, again, then it becomes a little less proprietary, I suppose, if you will, if that's.
Not that you're going to hold up for from it.
No, no, nor would I. I mean, that's not the point of why we would have one done. It's not to dangle a carrot and say, "Hey, we have this." Yeah. No, 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 no. I mean, that's certainly not our goal. Our goal is to fix it.
To me, it seems like that the need for the most money will be on the initiative, not on the study.
Correct. It's going to be moving it forward, Mark. It really is.
Right. So I'm thinking that if the city's going to get involved, that's when we should really get involved with that initiative. If they're going to cover the cost of the study, then we can kick in for the initiative once it's done.
Sure. Because I think that, I mean, and it's obvious and obvious, I do housing studies, and I'm not a planning person in that nature, but the obvious is going to be that's where the chunk of money is going to be needed is, once we have the data, then we'll know what we need the dollars for.
This would be more minimal, but I am, being on GMDC, I am a little concerned about, you know, whatever monies we do take from there does take monies away from other, you know, businesses that could come in and need some help at this time and stuff. So that was my concern, that we all get involved, and we do have to, however everybody here feels. That's just, you know, that's just my thought.
Well, I agree. I think, honestly, I think we should have some buy-in on the study, too, because it's going to benefit us in the whole.
You guys can laugh at me or whatever. What I was thinking was give $2,500 towards the study, and then I'm going to try to get to county and do the same thing. I think that's fair because we're going to benefit from it immensely.
Yeah. And like I said, the Economic Development Group has been trying to, city Economic Development Group has been trying to figure out how we could find it other than coming and asking for the whole amount, so this cuts that back so much.
And Tracy, 100% correct. You cannot qualify for any state or federal monies towards a housing, anything, unless you have the study done. It's no different than KDOT, Prudish, or anything like that. If you don't have the legwork done beforehand before you apply, you're not going to get it, you can't even apply.
Can't, right? Yeah, you're not even eligible to apply. And that's one of the very first things, that's the first checkbox on any of those things, is a current housing study, so.
Where would we be able to pull the money from?
Well, you're working on something for infrastructure, improving your infrastructure. I think that can come from there.
And that being said, again, since we wouldn't have that study commissioned until after the first of the year, I don't think you would have to cut Nick's paycheck between now and December in order to cover that. If you want it, you can. I mean, that's up to you.
But we have money in infrastructure.
But if you have those funds, whatever, the dollars wouldn't be expended until after January 1, which is.
Well, we would probably do, Tracy, if they approve something, is cut you a check this year's budget so it doesn't.
So you don't fall over next year, and that's.
Because we have money in this year's budget, too. That would be, so, that's my opinion on that, so I don't need to vote.
I'd make a motion that we pledge $2,500 towards the study.
Don't hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to the second end to pledge $2,500 towards the housing study to be done by GMDC. All those in favor? All opposed? Same sign? Okay, much appreciated.
Totally appreciate your support, and I will come back and keep you continually updated on where we're at and how that's going because at some point, Amy may be reaching out to you as a council for some concerns, things of that nature. So we will be obviously following up immensely, and I appreciate Debbie's input, and I'm sure she'll share additional information from our GMDC board meetings and that with you. It's not important.
We've been having some really good, interactive meetings, the meetings have become very good.
We're not just kicking the can down the road anymore, so I'm pretty excited about that. So appreciate you guys' support, and at any time, you know, reach out to me, and you can do that personally, directly to me, through Debbie, through Nick, through whatever venues you see fit. Thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Tracy.
Be safe going home, Tracy.
Yes.
Okay. Next is Gathering on the Santa Fe Trail.
Yeah. So Gathering in the Grove, as since it's the Santa Fe Trail 200, they're calling it Gathering on the Santa Fe Trail this year. They've done this in years past where they have their events at the Carnegie, and they serve wine. They do not sell it, does not leave the premises. In the past, we've allowed that. We have not charged them a fee to do so. So this is in accordance with what we've done since I've been here.
That's the way, as long as it's fair, and that is owned by the Historical Society, right? Aren't we?
No, it's not the Historical Society. It's a Gathering in the Grove. That's the art.
The building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they own that. But no alcohol is going to leave the premises, and no alcohol is being sold.
That's the way it's always been, that we don't. Do I hear a motion to approve the Gathering on the Grove request?
So moved.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. It moved to the second end to approve Gathering on the Grove's request to serve alcohol on Gathering, I said Santa Fe, okay. Gathering on the Santa Fe Trail. I'm used to it being Gathering in the Grove for their annual fundraiser. All those in favor?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
In that, they're asking us also to waive the application fee.
Yep, and I said that. That's why I was part of it. Yep. That needs to be said, though.
Okay. What is the application fee?
Oh.
I didn't think we had one for.
We have, we've always waived it, so.
So we know what we're voting on, so.
So we're waiving it, okay. Is that okay with you, too?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Those, motion carries 6-0. Okay. I have a Utilities Committee recommendation. The Utilities Committee recommends a pay increase for Jesse Povick and David Simmers of 50 cents for passing the Cross Connection Control and Backflow Prevention Certification. Good for them. Jesse's new pay rate will be 14.50 per hour, and David's will be 15.78. And I would like to have a confirmation of that.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved to the second end to approve the Utilities Committee recommendation. All those in favor? Those, motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Police and Fire recommendation to appoint Matthew Cook to a part-time police officer at a pay rate of 13.86. This appointment is contingent on passing a drug and alcohol screening, a background check, and physical. And would somebody please approve that appointment?
No.
Okay. I did say approve, but. Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved to the second end to approve the Police and Fire Committee recommendation for Matthew Cook to be a part-time police officer. All those in favor? Motion carries 6-0. Okay. I did not ask anybody to do the City Lake Executive Session.
We've got 30 minutes. That should go over there.
Sure.
I would move that we go into an executive session for client committee.
Attorney.
Yeah. With our city attorney, our city administrator, city councilman, and the mayor for 30 minutes.
One second.
Okay. Been moved to the second end. Going into an executive session, client attorney privilege for 30 minutes, including the people of my department. All those in favor? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, we'll see you back in a minute, just a little bit. Okay, we're back. Let's go to governing body comments. Sharon?
Oh.
Took your own guard, didn't I? Sorry.
I'm here and glad to be here.
That's good. Okay. Larry?
I have nothing to say, Mark.
Okay. Mark?
Only thing is, we'll try to get the tree committee together to, one, find a location for those donation trees, and then we do need to talk about pricing for the future, too. And then at some point, I do need to get with Councilman Wessel, and I think it's Councilman Burner, too, on the camping spots. We definitely need to try to do that, so. That's all I have.
Do we have to increase those tree costs before this new stat?
Yeah, I think this was the last round at the normal price. Starting next year, she's getting a price increase.
It's next year.
I think her recommendation was $20 per tree more.
She basically said that in most retail, they charge double the price of a tree, and I said, "Well, we can't do that." And she goes, "Well, I'd just like to get a little increase to offset the shipping," and so.
Which is fair. She's gone from 300 to 320.
But we'll go after the first of the year, the increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
As if the committee wants to come to the council and.
The committee makes their recommendation to do that.
Okay. The only thing I have is, how are we doing on the scenic radio route, radio?
I'm out of that, so I've turned that over to, oh, my goodness, what's that guy's name?
Hudson?
No, not Hudson.
Vern Hay?
The son. The son of the guy. The son started all that. He was working with REA, and they were working on a contract to allow that system to be up there. And I told him he needed to include the city since the city owns the equipment, and he said he was working on that, and he can get back to me, and it's been probably two or three weeks since I've heard from him. So I will follow up. But that is, REA's agreed to allow it up there. He says that they are going to install it and deal with all of it. It's all donated. It doesn't cost us anything to get a good one again. He looked at the system. There is an upgrade for the system where you can enter it on your computer, but for that chip to do that, it's $10,000. So I don't know that that's probably a good use of $10,000. But he said the new system's in good shape and should be fine. So I'm just waiting on him at this point. And he knows that that group down there, he's on that committee, he knows that they wanted that up before winter time and all that stuff. So he's been helping Chase County and them with theirs, so. But I will follow up with him and ask him.
Okay. One more thing, and I usually don't do this, but I will because I've had several neighbors ask. the chip and seal that they put on Chautauqua has a ton of dust coming off of it?
Yeah, usually, so...
How long does that usually last?
Well, the problem, you have to leave it on there for a certain amount of time and make sure you get enough rock worked into the oil and then we'll go with the sweet sweeper and sweep up the excess. It needs to be there for a while longer. It probably won't be something we do this fall.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember how long it lasted when they did Washington Park. I'm thinking it was like three to six months.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't want to take the, you don't want to take it off...
Too early.
Too early.
Well, that could be an answer. I just had several people ask me that since we're on that one too.
I just came down that today and it's really washboardy.
Yeah.
It has got kind of, we have, you know, that couple of hard drains.
That's, that's the excess rock that's on top and...
I see.
There's a lot of rock too, I don't know if the guys have noticed, but it toward the drains, so they might want to get that out before it goes in.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Yeah, just to leave that. Okay. Keith?
I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but I want, I want to thank Nick and Chief Wainburn for their accomplishment on the grant for their radio system and the training. I think our law enforcement general is doing a superb job and I want to thank everyone of them.
Thanks.
I would concur.
Yes.
Sean, Sean did a good job. He's really proactive in looking for grants and he did a good job writing this grant. There's some things I had to help him with, but the majority of it was Sean. And he's going to be responsible for administration and all those things. He's, you know, so whenever he needs help, I'm still helping, but he's been very proactive in doing that. I know you guys, I don't know if it was in the paper yet, but we also got a grant for that drone. So, yeah, so there's a lot of good things going on with the police department. So Sean's very proactive, which I appreciate because it makes me not have to try to do all that, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't have anything tonight. I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Well, Bill, what do you have next?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I got a whole list, so, yeah, a few things.
I was this close to the top of it.
No, um, yeah, it's at the top of Tuesday. BG's contacted me about, they're having a Halloween party on Friday and what they would like to be able to do is bring in a porta potty Saturday afternoon and set it up on the sidewalk or something because they're afraid their bathrooms can't handle the number of patrons that are going to be in there. And then it would be removed Sunday morning, but they requested that and I said I would bring it to the council, so.
Where do they have to put it?
Just right outside.
On the, on the...
Well, either in, either in a park, either in a parking spot or on the sidewalk. I think a parking spot would probably be the best bet for that.
There's not room in the alley port, is there?
I think the parking spot's probably the best bet. That way if somebody decides to be stupid and mess with it and tip it over...
Or across the street?
I don't know that you want people, because then you have an issue with people walking out with beer across the street. Yeah, and then you have people who've been drinking, maybe walking out in traffic and, you know, so. You know, either on a sidewalk or in a parking spot.
I always think a parking spot would be more appropriate than on a sidewalk.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. So if you guys are good with that, I can call them tomorrow and it was Chris Siegel who called me about it. He's helping out with the event and they just want to make sure that they don't have a mess and so.
What, what's the day, is it?
30th.
It is the 30th.
30th, yeah, Saturday the 30th.
So they wanted the porta potty on Friday, okay.
No, they're going to bring in Sat, that's, it's that evening is the, the party, so. They'll bring it in Saturday sometime and then they'll pick, and Rodney, Whittaker will come pick it up on Sunday, so it's not there for a long period of time.
Someday I'll pick it up for it.
We should probably maybe get them a barrier to put at the end of the parking space.
Yeah, we can do that too, yep.
And that's the same evening as the...
So I don't know if you guys are going to vote on that, if you're just good with doing it. I don't know, it needs, it needs something that's voted on.
I think we can just, just request.
I can see a lot of heads shaking yes here.
Keith talked about the grants and then APAC. So I know that was in the paper today and it was actually something I was bringing up anyways today. We're kind of at an impasse with APAC. BG and I put together a letter, I think with most, most of you have seen, regarding the workmanship and things down there on that and that it's not a project that has performed well. They also have a performance bond, which means if the project doesn't perform, they're responsible for it. So BG wrote him a letter and they basically put it back on BG that their design was the issue and they're taking no ownership in it. So at this point, I'm going to give this, turn it over to Bill. I've also sent Dave Duncan, who I've been talking with at APAC, regarding the issues and email letting him know that Bill will be in contact with him. So that's kind of where we're at with that. They kind of don't think it's their problem. So, well, that's not, that's what he said, he didn't think it's their issue, so. That's where that's at.
I'm not going to say anything.
The other thing that I'm going to say something about is I know Willis Skinner had some stuff in the paper today and it was inaccurate. The ordinance on the social media policy came directly from the League of Municipalities, which is what Bill and I based that ordinance off of. There's nothing illegal about what is in that ordinance. So for him to say it's illegal and we can't do that, we're not stifling people's First Amendment rights or anything by doing that. So that is false, so, just so that's addressed.
I hadn't seen it, what is he saying?
He's just saying that we're violating people's First Amendment rights and free speech and things like that.
By not letting use of city computer to be...
Right, or on work time, yeah, and, yeah, so making disparaging comments about the city, so. But, yeah, I just want to make that clear so that when people read that in the paper, it's in there tomorrow, that that's inaccurate. I just, I'm getting frustrated with inaccurates, people putting inaccurate stuff in the paper and then that's not saying anything about it. I don't think that's fair to you guys, I don't think it's fair to me, I don't think it's fair to the city employees that we don't address that stuff sometimes.
Aren't you the city citizens, they don't have good information?
Accurate information, you know. I don't know, it's just one of those deals, people used to seek out information. Now if they can't Google it or find it on Facebook, it seems like a lot of times that it didn't happen or the information they're getting is not completely accurate and they take it at face value, so. All right, now I'm opening my soapbox, so.
You're done?
I think I'm done.
Finished? Anybody else have anything that this has got?
Well, just, and I don't want this in the paper, but at the end of the month, I'm going out to Western Kansas, I've been asked to be in a movie. I'll be filming a movie at the end of the month out in Western Kansas.
I don't know how you're going to get out, but I'm putting it in the mannequins.
Don't put it in the mannequins.
You sure you said it after the meeting?
If then, no.
No, I, I think it's going to be some sort of a military. It's, it's a, it's a movie that movie maker Kim Sturgeon's doing and it's about a family, their last name was German, they're not a German family, but their name is German. And they were going from Missouri to Colorado and they were attacked by the Cheyenne, I believe, and mother and father and the oldest boy was killed and, and the girls were all taken captive and, and the saga of getting those girls back from the Native Americans. So that's why I haven't trimmed this beard back because I was asked a while ago to be in this movie.
Well, I have to start calling you Mark Eastwood.
I have to tell you a little funny story on that. You know, this guy's done several movies and I, you know, I know him and I said, "Next one you have, I'd like to be in it, I don't care if I'm shoveling a horse manure" and so that may be what I'm doing, so.
Keith makes some good stuff, that's...
That'll be fun. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second?
Second.
It's been moved to the second end to adjourn, all in favor? Motion carries 6-0.
Western Kansas, Mark.
Oakley.
Yeah, that one.